Good morning.
Good morning.
We're on your flowers.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Did you?
I played last night.
That's the first time we put it on like.
You're fifty over five.
I know.
You've been always doing it.
Close. No, I shot at ninety-four.
They're trying to explain it all, but they're using.
Hey.
How it's.
Is that a code?
Um, with.
The actual word.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Yeah, he's just got to sign it and we'll be off.
Yeah, thank you.
You got it. How was your experience?
All right.
Race for a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we will call the meeting to order. We have the agenda, are there additions or corrections?
Not that I'm aware of, Mr. Chair.
Are there none, is there a motion?
I'll move.
Chair moves, is there a second?
It's Ted, I'll second.
Ted seconds, any more discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, all right, motion carried. Public input, is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? All right, seeing none. Consent agenda.
It was really short.
I'll move to approve.
Nope. Who was first?
I think Dave, Dave moves.
I'll be second then.
Tom, Tom seconds, any more discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, all right. County employee recognition.
Good morning.
Morning.
For county employee recognition today in human services, Michael Harla, transit driver began the part-time position on June twenty-third. In the sheriff's department, Sharon Blair, communication supervisor is recognized for fifteen years of service on June thirtieth. And Bill Darter, dispatcher jailer began the full-time position on June eighteenth.
All right, thank you. Construction update.
It's all done. It's all done, everybody can move in. Yeah, no, good, good morning, everybody. Again, Austin Smith, ICS project manager. This will just be a general construction update. We're starting to really gain traction out there. I don't know if you guys have driven on the west side or passed it, but we're moving dirt. Yeah, so I'll go through a quick update, we'll take a peek at the schedule, go through some progress photos, and then I'll open up to any questions at the end of it. So a quick update, so as you guys have known, we started on level two of the government center. We did reach substantial completion, final inspections were completed, and owner furniture move-in has been underway, expected to be done this week, with move-in happening this week up on the second level. And then starting next Monday, we'll be hitting it hard on the first level. So things are moving at the government center. Additions wise, at the garage in Sallyport, so the big addition on the west side. Site removals were completed, soil corrections commenced and were completed, and then excavations for our deep footings were completed, they commenced and were completed. We actually have our concrete guys on site right now, getting that footing formed up and they're pouring on Wednesday. So things are moving at the additions. And then at the law enforcement side over at the, at the book, or at the, at the admin spaces, our temp Sallyport on the north side was completed, so that's up and operational, and our temp Egress on the east side has also been completed. So once we kind of get wrapped up on the west side for our deep point excavations, you'll see us moving dirt on the east side here starting next week. So things are starting to click pretty well out there. So the next slides, couple slides, I got some progress photos. So these photos here up on second level, just showing the finished, finished carpet, lights, drywall paint. Again, second level is showing kind of the new cabinetry, furniture being moved in, into that same space on second level. As we continue to move down, just showing the site removals, so these photos where that old, was where that old garage used to be. That, that came down, was hauled out pretty, pretty quick. And then the next photo here is just showing the soil corrections that were being made on the west side as well. So things are moving out there. So upcoming, so we'll be continuing our bi-weekly project oversight committee meetings with Jeff and his team. It will be, or continuing construction at the government center as well as the additions. So things are, as I alluded to, we're, we're starting to gain traction, things are moving, and it's going to be very busy here for the next several months. Overall schedule, again, just a high-level recap. So for the renovations, the level one renovations commencing June to September. So again, that'll be happening, we'll be bouncing down to level one next Monday. Lobby records and sheriff's offices happening January to April of twenty-six, and the housing units and the booking areas are commencing June of twenty-five through September of twenty-six. And the new construction, the garage in Sallyport commenced in May, that'll be wrapped up in June of twenty-six. And then the lobby record sheriff's addition will be commencing here next week, will be wrapped up January twenty-six.
Specifically, environmental services will be moving, and GIS will be moving upstairs back to their new location to, tomorrow. And property records will be moving up on Monday. As Austin mentioned, the, the lower spaces will begin renovation on Monday, so we need to get ESO out of there this week. And it seemed like a good idea to not have them all moving at the same time, so. The sheriff's administrative entrance will be in the, through the social services entrance, starting today at noon. I think that's the only other specific detail.
Yep.
Yep. Have we run into any unknown snags or anything surprises that?
You know, not, not really, not yet. Obviously, you know, especially when we start digging, there might be contaminated soils. You know, there happened a couple utility lines that we're not identifying on the survey that we are working through. But really, outside of that, it's been going pretty good. Yep.
I was going to have the same question, but ask if there was any major hiccups or something.
No, no.
I know in construction, little things can come up all the time.
Yeah, no, there's for sure unforeseen that do happen and probably will happen on this job, especially when we get into the renovations, but yeah, as I stated, I mean, as of right now, we're starting to gain traction. Things are moving pretty well out there.
And you're pretty confident about the time schedule?
Yep, yeah, yeah, we had to do some shifting around just due to the building permit delay, but we do have the permit. But as far as the substantial completion, certificate of occupancy, we're still tracking.
Okay.
Yep.
Any questions? All right, well, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, natural resources management.
Good morning.
Morning.
We've had a pretty busy couple weeks here, so. I do have a couple items today for, for you all. First is a, so a few months ago, I came to get approval to apply for a grant to replace the ATV crossing on Hay Creek up north by Island Lake. It's, it's, if we don't, if the club doesn't have it, it definitely causes a safety concern where four-wheelers will go out onto the road or snowmobiles. So they, we, we received the grant, seventy-two thousand dollars from this federal recreation trails grant. But the, the DOT, the Minnesota Department of Transportation wants us to sign a cost agreement between them and our office, so they can, they can send out bid letting. So they need that here shortly, and we just need to have a, have a plan that we're, we're gonna pay them essentially as the project's done. So we just need to have approval to sign their, their resolution. They, the club, the club will cover anything above the seventy-two thousand. It looks like, looks like it's going to be about ninety-five thousand in their estimates, but we'll see once bid letting is, is let out and see what it actually comes back as, but.
You got a little platform bridge or something?
It, it's a, so it's a, it's a box culvert extension, and then they're going to build a trail over top of it.
It's a mess where it's going. Yeah, I'll move to approve.
And it's, it is a pass-through, so if we pay it, then they'll, the grant will pay us back, so.
I'll second, but I've got a question.
Sure.
So basically then, the bid letting, that'll be the, the Department of Transportation that decides on who does it, or is that?
Yeah, I'm sure the low, low quote or whatever they, they decide. That's, so that whoever's replacing the highway, they're going to do the, the work there too, I believe. And then it'll be a short project because they don't want that, that, that box culvert to be out for too long, so traffic can keep moving through.
I'm just curious how does, you know, because we do pass-through grants for the club.
Yep.
Is that how they get their money? Because twenty-five thousand dollars is a lot of money.
So they get it from grant and aid funding from the, the state of Minnesota.
Okay.
So they do have a pot of money that they can spend on this type of thing.
And that's what we approve each year that?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, we have, we sponsor, as, all these clubs need government sponsors to get grant and aid funding. And I think we sponsor about ten different clubs in the area.
Was there an anticipated date for when this was going to be, the project was going to be moving forward?
Yeah, so he said the, the culvert should be done by next July, two thousand twenty-six. Could be from June to July.
Okay.
Plus this will help with the erosion.
Yeah, yep, and I, it's kind of a goofy deal, I, Minnesota DOT wouldn't pay for it, but I told them that if they don't put it in, that ATVs are going to go on the road and it's going to be a dangerous deal, but. That I think this will cause, this'll, this'll make, definitely make things safer for recreativeness.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All those in favor, aye? Opposed, all right, motion carried.
All right, thank you. And one other note is for another club, the, the Forest Riders snowmobile club. We received a grant to replace the bridge up by Hungry Man Lake too, so a couple good pieces of news. I'm sure I'll be back with that information at a future date. The second item is, we, four, no, six different townships had blowdown damage up north on county lands. Approximately five thousand acres of Howard County TFL lands were damaged by the June wind, windstorm, and approximately two thousand to twenty-one hundred acres were mature timber that fell down in the, in the storm. So that consisted of mature pine and aspen. And it's, it, that, that two thousand acres is about a whole yearly plan for us. It's kind of too bad that it had to happen. We would like to hold the timber auction to sell this like within a month and a half. I'll be gone on vacation the next board meeting, so I, I just kind of wanted to come to this one, ask for approval to hold the auction for that, them salvage sales. We're looking at having the auction like the beginning of August, August fourth through August eleventh, depending on when we can get sales in from the foresters. Time restraints would be three months on the pine and six months on the aspen to get them harvested. The, the pine is, the aspen's not so bad with timeline, it's the, it's the pine, the beetles move in, the fungus moves in. And then just to get these sold too is, it's a big public safety concern for us. There's hunting, there's still trees falling down out there. So we'd like to get them harvested before hunting season, if possible. But looking to get approval to have a, have a timber auction within the next month or month and a half.
Cory, I have a question, so, you know, you said mature pine, would you have eventually put this, you know, these acres? Or would you have just let the mature pine be?
Sometimes we let it be if it's, especially a lot of it was along the Mississippi River. We usually try not to mess with that too much, just for aesthetics, but.
Are they mostly white pine?
Red pine, like.
Well, that's too bad.
Two foot across on the stump, so. And a lot of it was plantations, which still had probably forty years to live before we do a final harvest. But we'll be, we'll be cutting this and planting them back to pine, so.
Beetles are really attracted to the smell of damaged pine.
Yeah, yep, yeah, you know that.
Yeah, I've seen it happen. If you don't get to it right away, it'll start spreading fast in other pine.
Yep.
Um, what's, what's your time schedule for regeneration of, of these areas?
So we usually need two years, the first year we try to spray the hazel and the thistles that come back, and then the second year we plant, so it'd be two years from, from this fall.
You probably need a, a little bit extra for that.
Yeah, that's why.
For regeneration then.
I'm glad we're putting in the full twenty percent or whatever into the forest development fund, we'll definitely need it.
Is it going to delay any other timber auctions?
Yeah, so that's another thing I wanted to mention is, since it is, it's almost a yearly plan, we would like to just have this take the place of our October auction. Just one auction, it'll help out a little bit.
Will you give some grace unto the people that say at the last auction?
Yeah, so if, if they, if they're hard at it, cutting blowdown sales, the state usually gives a year extension if they need it, and maybe we'll, we can try to do the same thing, either six months or a year, if they're helping out. Usually you need some kind of proof that they've been cutting blowdown, but we kind of know where the loggers are at and what they're doing, so.
Will this, will this be attractive to them to bid on?
Yeah, the big pine should be, and then the aspen too, there's still a good aspen market. Yeah, we'll try to, we're not going to start it out at the high value we usually start out timber at, which is too bad, but we'll try to definitely get something, something out of it. If, if it gets cut quick enough, it, it still holds its value, so.
I'll make a motion to approve, but I have one more question, how was your airplane ride?
It was, it was actually pretty good.
You went up to survey the areas and?
Yeah, yep, we saw so much damage from Fern Township all the way up to Ferris Park, just amazing. It's almost just sad looking at, not at the county land, but the private landowners. We can always replant, we, but the, seeing the houses and properties that were damaged, it was pretty tough to look at. We could see Lake Bemidji in the distance, and you can just see all the trees just laying on the, on the ground, it's too bad.
I'll second. Ted moves, Tom seconds, any more discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, all right, motion carried.
All right, thank you.
Cory, did you want to provide just a bit of an update on Deep Lake, or did we do that at the last meeting?
Oh.
Nothing's really changed, other than?
Yeah, they've, they submitted their, so you guys know already probably that the, there's no archaeology thing, occurrences out there. But they're, they did submit last week to the state of Minnesota their report, so we should hear, hear back soon, hopefully, what we're.
Once the state accepts that, that report, they'll free up the balance of the grant award, so that we can let the bid for the demolition and finalize the bid for, or let the bid for, hopefully for doing the road and the parking lot. And then the other item that, that is soon to happen is making sure that we're getting on the planning commission's agenda to get the variance, any variance requests that we need, and eventually get the conditional use application in for the use of a park, parks, conditionally permitted use. So we knew this was happening, so the good news is there's very likely time to get all those things done yet in twenty-twenty-five.
Well, well, for a conditional use permit, will you be able to apply for the whole thing, all phases of it?
That's, that's the intention is to, is to apply for the scope of the, of the project.
Okay.
In one, in one permit.
And then, and then the county will allow, even though you won't, you have a timeframe for getting, like getting the RV parks and all that, all that can be done, number of years down on the road there.
Yeah, so I believe they request a map, and then we'll just have all the different areas on the map labeled where all the different structures or campgrounds are going.
Cory, I do have a question about the, the storm damage auction. Are you going to break it up into individual tracks?
Yes, yes.
Like two and three areas together?
Yep, yeah, so there's going to be a bunch of different ones, I'm guessing, probably different, twenty different tracks. Yeah, they'll kind of be in different areas, but for the most part, each sale will be areas right, right next to each other. Yep.
Any access issues that you?
Not right now, we, we got most of our, or we got the main roads cleared up. Now we're working on the, the secondary trails, to get them cleared up so we can get back into further places.
Did you close any trails because of this?
We didn't really have to, no, we, we, I am proud of the guys, they, they, they worked their butts off getting these trails opened up pretty quick. Then we took the skid steer behind them and really, really cleared them off, but. No, everything's, everything's open besides some of the smaller offshoot trails. Have to see, see if the, the ATV clubs or the snowmobile clubs need a little bit of help on theirs too.
Was Deep Lake Park south of the damage?
Yeah, that wasn't damaged, so that was good. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, and then Troy's here, we're working on a, a, what is it, eagle, eagle eye imagery.
Yeah, eagle view imagery, and then I did get an estimate today, I sent, I sent Cory the map, and he, you approved of it, right?
Yeah, yep, yep.
Their estimate was eight thousand.
Okay, okay, that's less than I thought, so we would, I guess I'm just looking for approval too to pay for this eagle view imagery for, especially for replanting and for silver, forest development work. So we would, it would actually help out Troy too with his, his emergency disaster deal too, so. We would pay that out of the forest development fund, that eight thousand. I guess we would just need approval to pay for that too. If we can get approval from you guys.
So that will be a, a separate flyover of just those areas, the northern four to six townships, so that we have detail to compare from the last time they flew over to this time that we flew over. And although the cost of that flight is not reimbursable, it will really help to make sure that we assess the damage appropriately, so that any infrastructure loss that the county has suffered, we'll be able to make sure we account for when we're filling out the forms and playing with the pencils and filling out this, this report, so. It's the best way for us to, to make sure that we get everything in that, that qualifies as a reimbursable expense. It's also, as Cory mentioned, a good way for him and his crew to know exactly how to set up their, their replantings and management.
So are you looking for a motion then?
Yeah, yep.
Because I'll make the motion.
Okay.
To accept the eight thousand dollar bid.
Okay.
Eagle view.
Yes, I'll, I'll let Jack with GIS is the one that coordinates the bids with Eagle View, so he got back to me this morning, and that's what he had received, so I'll let him know. And which is, which is half what we thought it was going to be, so that's good.
And will it be accessible to the public? I guess that's one thing I'd like to, if it could be accessible to the public, like, say you want to see your property.
Oh, yeah, I'd like that.
I don't know how in-depth and how many, how much picture, pictures we're going to get in that sense, um.
Yeah, I guess if they want to come to our office and get pictures, they can.
It, it's, it'll be a separate layer.
Sure.
And I'm sure that we can make a decision to make that layer available on the, on the.
That would be nice, so landowners could see. Yeah, okay.
Ted moves, David seconds, any more discussion?
Just want to say thank you. It's kind of unusual to bring something up in the middle of the meeting for an approval like this, but I think it's kind of different circumstances here today.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, it's, everything's kind of moving so quick, we're trying to fit things.
We don't meet again for two weeks, so.
Yep, yep.
My only question is, how, how fast does this flight get taken care of to where you have the data?
I'm, I'm not sure they haven't already done it.
Okay, all right.
Correct, yeah.
That's what I was wondering.
It'll be, it'll be a pretty quick turnaround, yes.
Okay, all right, very good. Right, so we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, aye? Opposed, great, motion carried.
Thank you, any more questions? Thank you, have a good day.
Cory, you need a motion to approve this, the timber auction?
Already done.
Already done, okay.
And I'll bring that, when, after we have it, I'll bring the, the final results.
Okay, all right, thank you. Environmental services.
Oh, highway.
Oh, highway, sorry. I jumped way too far, right?
Highway will be quick.
Morning. Just have one item, and then we can do a brief construction update to some changes in the last couple weeks. So I have an item here to review and approve a quote for a Trimble R nine eighty TSC seven controller for the survey department. We were planning on purchasing this next year in the budget, but we do have the funds in an account that NRM pays into survey. There's money there, and with the amount of construction this year, we're looking at sharing this with, with highway to use out on some of our projects this year as well. And the knowledge that I just found out that they, their screen on their Trimble is cracked, and it's really unusable for some of the needs that they have in survey. So we're just looking to move it up with the funds that are available already in the budget. And I put on there, I only received one quote because it's the supplier we have. Currently, we have our software through them, and we have a good relationship with this Frontier Precision for the equipment.
Didn't we, Trimble, I've heard that phrase a couple times, or term, or company, whatever here. So we've already dealt with some of these a couple times earlier this year.
Yep, we purchased a total station earlier this year for the highway department, a new total station, or a used total station. Trimble is the brand, and Frontier Precision is the software holder of that brand, and then they, they sell that. But I think most highway departments that I've ever worked with use Trimble, or use that brand of GPS equipment.
I didn't want to look back and see if I could find all the other ones that you talked about, but.
Yeah, and survey specifically uses the up-to-date, they, they're changing all the time, they're, they're, where they're getting their data. I don't, I'm not even knowledgeable that much on this, but they need that up-to-date data versus highway. We can use the older models because we're using it more for alignments that we, we put into the controllers.
I'll move to approve.
Chair moves, is there a second?
I'll second.
Tom seconds, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, all right, motion carried.
And then just storm-related updates, we, we're clear on our roads. We're working in the right-of-way right now to get the debris out of the right-of-way. Our guys had the roads cleared by Saturday night after the storm, so they did an excellent job clearing. We're moving some of the debris off into a piling station that we've talked with NRM about, the location. And then also we're pushing back, the debris back into land if it's undeveloped, or if it's a forested land, just pushing some of the brush and trees back into the land. So about another week or so is what Eric anticipated for our right-of-ways to be kind of cleared out and, and done. And then Adam just had a brief construction update.
Yeah, we wrapped up our egg surfacing project on the twentieth of June. Calcium chloride will be wrapping up early next week, weather permitting. The Cassau forty-five bridge did get underway last week, so that detour is in place. We're estimating through the end of August for that project. Cassau one, we are planning to start after the fourth, so the seventh of July, that detour will be in place. And yeah, again, that one's completion date end of, or middle of October, so. The seven and forty roundabout, we did get started on that project, and the detour is in place with an estimated completion date of the end of August. Cassau thirteen, City of Nevis project, we're still kind of estimating that middle of August start date. And that'll be about six weeks of construction activities. And next week, we will be starting our LED stop sign projects too, so you guys might see some, some new LED stop signs going up throughout the county as well. So it'll take about a week for those guys to put thirty-eight signs in, so. Yeah, that's about all I got for an update.
Andrea, um, I haven't been able to tour all of my, my district. I have hit, uh, Fartan and Helga and Rockwood and Fern even, but not, like I said, I haven't driven every road. So has there, was there a lot of downed trees on county highways?
There was a lot, um, in the right-of-way, I'll say, the roads not necessarily, cause they, they are cleared pretty well. Um, especially on the paved roads, uh, but, uh, the Grace Lake, is it forty-six up the Grace Lake Loop? Had quite a few down, um, three had quite a bit down, um, kind of select areas. It seemed like it came through in blue and then, you know, just dissipated elsewhere, so.
I had a couple of calls from County Road twenty-nine, which is on the west side of Plantanginette.
Yeah.
And I specifically, specifically drove down that. I thought you guys did a good job, it, it seemed like there was, you know, a spot here and a spot there. And, and I'm sorry Hubbard County residents, but I've been in Bemidji and, and, uh.
It's, it's amazing that, the, I'll call it devastation up there, it's, it's amazing right on the east side of the lake, no comparison, yeah.
I appreciate the work you guys are doing.
Thank you, thank you.
And I know, and I'm, we're gonna probably touch on this later, but I know there's, I've had a, a couple of residents wanna know, like in Bemidji where they left debris at the roadside. And I've told them that I didn't think we were gonna be doing that, and I explained just basically that we don't really have the man to, manpower or the resources. But can you maybe explain that a little bit more?
Yeah, um, it's, City of Bemidji specifically was picking up debris, but Beltrami County wasn't outside of the bones. Um, for the, exactly the reasons you stated, you, um, probably in the north half of the county, we have a hundred and fifty miles of road. And that's, that's lane miles, so three hundred miles of road that we would've had to clear and with, you know, ten, we have ten guys. And just our, our tandem trucks, it would've, it would've taken months to clear all that out, you know, spot jumping spots, um. We would've had to hire a private company with a, with a side dump truck is how I would've done it, um, come in and do it and. And then that's negating, you know, the other duties that they have to do, they have to mow the, the roads, they need to, we have some other projects that they need to be working on. Out there too, so it's just, it's really just not economical to, to do it in the timeline that we have.
Thank you.
With the thirteen project, is it going to be open traffic the whole time?
Yup, um, there are a couple culvert replacements.
Gonna be my question.
Um, but I think the plan right now is to do it, keep a lane open there basically, so. Um, the contractor can propose a detour when the time comes, but they haven't yet, so.
Okay, there isn't a whole lot of options there for detours.
Right, exactly, so, um, the plan is to keep it open right now, so.
Is Highway one gonna be that way or is it totally closed?
It'll be closed, but they do have to keep access to the business and residences. So basically they'll kind of open the trench during the day and then close it at night. Um, yeah, that's kind of how that works there, so.
Yesterday with SWCD.
Yup, so the residents and businesses, they can still access it, but, you know, through traffic, we really need them to use the detour there, so.
Anything else? Alright, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Environmental Services.
Good morning. I have one item for the board, which is a preliminary plot application titled County Line Estates. It's submitted by the Hubbard County HRA EDA. It's to plat, uh, forty acre tract up in Fartan township, Fartan Township just north of Highway two. On a township road into seven lots, uh, the lots would all but the town road, so that'd be how they'd be accessed. Uh, the lots all meet ordinance requirements in terms of lot size and having two, uh, septic system drain field sites. As required by state rules, so the planning commission unanimously recommended approval of the prelim plat to the board. And that's what we would be requesting, uh, from the board this morning.
Guess I'll make a motion to approve, um, uh, I think we pretty much all know a whole lot about this project since we're part of it.
Ted moves, Dave seconds, any more discussion? I guess, see, my only question was there, was there any issue with driveway approaches onto three hundred and seven, is it three hundred and seventh?
We didn't receive any correspondence from the township, so. Taking that, is there okay with it?
Each lot have a driveway?
So the, interestingly, the subdivision ordinance, if this was done as an administrative subdivision, would limit the number of lots. That could front the road, uh, in that quarter mile stretch to four. But with the plating section of the ordinance, it doesn't have that same limitation, so that's why it's allowed. Don't know that that's an intentional thing, but that's just the way the ordinance language is at present.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, great, motion carried.
Thank you, and then I have one quick, uh, just FYI for the board. And that is, uh, last Friday, my office became aware of a potential, uh, data exposure. That we had with our online records, uh, that we're currently in the process of working through with M C I T. They've assigned counsel in a cybersecurity firm to help us with the investigation. Identify the potential scope of the issue and then take action as needed according to statute, so. As I know more, I'll provide more details, but I just wanted to make you aware, uh, of where things are at, at the current time.
Okay, well, thank you.
Pardon?
Is it hampering your work at all?
It's taking, uh, fair amount of my time to deal with it, but hopefully we, I, I'm, I'm grateful. That M C I T has given the resources that they have to it, so, uh, I think we are in the best position that we could be to, to be able to deal with it. As best as we can.
Okay, huh, thank you.
Thank you.
Emergency management.
Good morning. Oh, I'm not sure where we're gonna start, if we're gonna start with, uh, the E O P or the storm.
Which one do you wanna do first?
It doesn't matter to me, whatever's on the.
Then we're starting with the storm declaration.
Okay. So you can see there's a declaration, um, for Hubbard County to, to glare, to declare. Um, one thing that, um, was handed out, Denise handed out a letter, that's another add-on to the declaration. I need to, um, drop a letter, which I did, and then submit that to, uh, H S E M. So I'll end up emailing that and also attaching, um, that with the declaration. So I'll post all, all this on Web E O C, that's what the state and federal government uses specific to, you know, anytime we have a disaster or damages. So, um, I'm just requesting that the board actually makes a declaration, um, for the state of emergency. Um, to give you an estimate where we're at, um, Hubbard County, along with all the townships. And I'm still waiting on a few agencies to give me an estimate on, uh, the debris removal, um, part of assessments. But we're over three hundred and thirty thousand dollars already, um, and that's without Beltrami Electric reporting. Um, on their, you know, assessment and I don't even wanna guess what theirs is. Um, it really is gonna depend on if they had a lot of lines down in Hubbard County that they end up wanting to replace. That assessment could be, um, very high, because we did have, um, damages or power outages. Down in the southern part of the county with Itasca Mantrap with, with the storm as well, they had two and a half miles of line. Um, that was damaged and their estimate is a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars to replace that line. Um, and they indicated the reason they have to replace is because it had too many splices in it, so. I'm hoping to get Beltrami Electric's, uh, initial assessment today, if not tomorrow. Um, their CEO or, um, did email me last night and she indicated she hoped to get it done today, so.
Do you have any communication with the Burlington Northern?
I have not yet, um, and, but I do need, I've been up there and I've seen that, you know, there was some tree damages, um, or down. Um, I need to touch base with them as well, so I'm waiting on, um, a handful of, uh. Townships or, so Hart Lake, Lake Hattie, I'm waiting on them, and then Itasca Park, so the state. Um, they didn't, we didn't have any damages, um, or downed trees in Hubbard County in the park, but LaSalle, um, had some extensive. Um, trees down and removal there, so, um, I'm waiting on that estimate from them. And then, uh, ATV trails and bike trails, um, also do qualify, so. Corey's going to reach out, Kimball, to some of the ATV clubs, um, and see if they've been out. Um, so those are the ones that I'm waiting on, along with Burlington Northern, so, uh, that number could substantially increase. To give you an understanding too, the FEMA sets, um, both state and federal guidelines for, uh, damages. Um, so the state guideline for Hubbard County is just a little bit over fifty thousand dollars. So obviously we've, um, exceeded that, and this has to do with in- infrastructure damages. So everything that we're talking about, tree removal from roads, um, parks, um, and then, uh, equipment. So if we had any, you know, any damages to equipment, um, the federal standard is just a little over a hundred thousand dollars. Um, so as it stands right now, um, all entities in Hubbard County are looking at getting seventy-five percent. Uh, reimbursement back for their costs. If the state ends up reaching, um, the federal standard as a whole, which is just under ten point eight million dollars. Um, that's where that federal number then comes in, that hundred thousand, being that we're over that too. Um, if we reach that and the federal government would, um, declare. Then everybody would see that twenty-five percent that they, that the state didn't pick up, so. That's kind of an understanding and, and how you can, if you have any questions from private citizens, um, that's how that works. Private property, um, you know, I've had a lot of questions or people, you know, when's FEMA coming? Um, understand FEMA won't even come unless the state meets that ten point eight million dollar threshold. And then FEMA would come and they'll go out and do some, um, damage assessments on private property. That's when they would actually get involved, um, and then private property owners that are underinsured or not insured. Would see some money from FEMA, but insured property owners, you know, would, would not see any money from, from FEMA. So just if you have any questions from, you know, the public out there, that's, that's how it works, so. We've already had some comments, you know, why isn't FEMA here and, 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 and that type of stuff, so.
So how's that cost for an uninsured get determined or portrayed into the number?
That's a separate number, so that ten point eight million dollars, that is one hundred percent infrastructure related. So that is, you know, it's debris removal from roadways, um, co-ops, so our electrical and water. Um, and then, like I said, parks and recreation qualifies and then equipment. That private property, um, damages doesn't equate at all and doesn't even, there's no number. Where that could reach where FEMA would get involved, the only time FEMA comes is if the state makes a declaration. Which the governor is, is considering, um, and then obviously it's gonna, if we reach that ten point eight million with this specific storm on the twenty-first. Um, then the governor would declare, and then if FEMA or the president, you know, makes a declaration federally. Then they would come, and it's twofold, so they come here, take at the public infrastructure damages, but at that point too. Then they will go out and assist with private property damage assessment. Um, and anybody then that is underinsured or not insured would see some money from FEMA, um.
Only if it eclipses that ten million.
Correct.
All that happens first.
Yup, yup, that's the only way that they'll get involved, so, um, just to give you an understanding, so it's.
Were there any issues of, you know, people not being able to get water or if they lost their home, a place to live?
No, not in Hubbard, I mean, we did have some, um, homes that had, you know, some extensive damage. Um, we had some that were impacted from the electricity being out and lost all their food and obviously didn't have water for days as well. Um, the American Red Cross, you know, and the United Way were in Bemidji, um, and supporting those people. Actually quite well, uh, so the American Red Cross does have monies a- available. To assist private property owners, even if they're insured, so I mean, if you have any questions, maybe they're underinsured. Um, but they do have money available to assist insured or underinsured with damages. Um, with replacing food, helping get, you know, their electrical, say they had some damages to their home. You know, and damages to their plumbing and electrical in the home, um, there are monies available through the American Red Cross to assist those people. I've had one resident, you know, in Hubbard County that I've been working with that, that, um, you know, had some damages. And specifically, uh, lost their electricity for an extended period of, of time, um. Outside of that, that's the only one that I've, I've had contact with and, with, within Hubbard, but.
We, we have had old buildings that were completely destroyed, but as far as residences, I don't believe I've heard of any actual residences that were destroyed. But I know the Posida area, I think, had some, uh, a barn completely destroyed and there were some old buildings.
Can you, uh, Troy, can you reiterate to people, be careful of scammers?
Oh, absolutely, I mean, I think I did bring that up on the radio yesterday with, through that interview and, and. I know the radio stations out of Bemidji area are doing it too, um, not that our stations down here are, are doing it as well. But yeah, it's, it's really important, um, you know, that has been stressed, but the main thing is, is not to give money upfront. To these tree removal service companies, they'll come, um, and tell individuals that, you know, yup, we'll, we'll end up doing this. Um, and they'll state that they need to request, or they'll request, you know, a certain amount of money down and say, okay, we'll come back. You know, in three weeks to five weeks and, and complete your job and they never come back. Also, another big thing is, is landowners, if you have any of them, um, you can tell them to ask to see if they're insured. Um, those tree service companies, um, ask to see if they're insured or not. Um, I know the City of Bemidji is, is, even has a requirement in place where all of these tree service companies. Have to actually go and get a, an emergency permit to work within the city. And it's really simple and fast, they just need to show proof that they're, um, insured and then they'll hand them out, so. Um, City of Resident, or residents there can actually check, well, they'll have a card, that's what they're issuing, um. Beltrami County and, and any townships are not doing that either, that's a pretty large undertaking if you're gonna do it, you know, in the county and township. Um, level, um, and then where do you do it, where do you send everybody if you're gonna, you do it, so, but.
Troy, I'm just curious with Itasca Mantrap, did they bury the line when they put in the line or did they do it overhead?
I don't know that they've replaced it yet, so they patched it, um, and what they told me was is it has too many splices in it now, so they need to replace it. So that estimate, um, I haven't seen the specific estimate, that's something that I will see in the future and the state will see. So to give you an understanding, um, later today, I'll get a copy from either Jeff or Denise of your signed declaration. And I'll submit that, and along with that letter, um, to H S E M. That kicks in, uh, a time process, that letter more than anything, along with the declaration. Where the state will, um, get back with me and set up a date and a time where they'll come to Hubbard County. And then meet with all the stakeholders, it'll probably take place up here, um, in this room, cause, or maybe down at, downstairs below Social Services. But, um, that's where all these entities, Itasca Mantrap, Beltrami Electric, Townships, the county, um, will submit. More detailed information to the state specific to their damages, so that's where Beltrami Electric. I mean, we'll find out whether or not they intend on burying that two and a half miles or if that's just for running a new line, you know, overhead, so. Um, that's kinda how it works. We were, not that we were behind the eight ball, um, I was working on it and it's ready to go. We were, not that we were behind the eight ball, um, I was working on it and it's ready to go. Um, Jack with GIS actually did an overlay with our map. Um, and it's specific to emergency management and disasters, um, to where. All these entities, these stakeholders that I'm talking about could actually have taken pictures and submitted their estimates online, um, and then. You know, as an emergency manager, you just go in and, and, uh. Submit that to Web E O C, it tracks right over to Web E O C, um. So moving forward, that would be what we're going to do, um, so we, I'd have more of that information right upfront if I task a match. You know, a man trap submitted that, um, but we're doing it the old way, which is still okay, um, so. We're, we're submitting all paper documents and then pictures after the fact, um, but that is something that. Later this year, ho- hopefully, um, we'll be ready, actually, Jack. And I might go out and start doing it even with this a little bit after the fact, cause I can do it before the state comes, so.
Okay.
I'll move to approve the declaration.
Dave moves.
It's Ted, I'll second.
Ted seconds, any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, right, motion carried.
Well, the next item there I can see is the emergency operation plan, um.
I would like to point something out on that, um, since Troy took on this role, he has worked on this extensively. Um, that was a goal of ours to get that done and updated. Um, he has done a, a fantastic job on that in between taking additional classes, you know, federal classes. As well, but, um, this thing needed some massive updating and, um. He worked on this diligently and, and as you know, cause I'm, it was sent to everybody. It is a huge document, it is, and there's lots of indexes, a lot of attachments that. Um, he was in charge of reaching out to the, all these other entities, whether it's the hospital to the different fire departments, he attended. Fire chief meetings, um, it, it was a lot of work and, um. As the sheriff, I'm, I'm very proud of, uh, the product that he kicked out to you. Today that we're looking for approval of and, and, um, yeah, it's, it was a big undertaking and this was a, a big load off of. Uh, you know, our shoulders now that this is truly updated to the point where it's a truly a good product.
Looks good and it's much easier to read.
Yes, yeah.
He condensed some things that, that it needed, you know, there were some things that as you, you were aware was just. He just got rid of a lot of things that didn't need to be in there, yes.
Be easier to find what you're looking for.
Yep.
Well, I'm glad that a lot of you looked at it, at least I know Commissioner Delahun, um, you know, read through it and pointed out two things, so. I, I will make those changes, I do have a word document, so, um, the document that you all were sent was, you know, a PDF and that's. Eventually what the end product will be, um, and what you will sign will be a PDF, but, um. There was one thing with, uh, the media that I needed to remove and then, um, I will end up adding. The two telephone providers, um, in the resource guide, um, along with, uh, the public utilities. So that's where I'll end up adding, um, both of those.
Be helpful to add, uh, whoever the contact is from. Northwest Emergency Communication Board, so somebody instantly has the number if you need to get radios or. Portable dispatch or.
Yeah, we certainly can.
I can add that, that's actually in the communication, um. Annex that, that, that mobile one is available, um, so it's in that, that annex, um, specifically. Um, that that's available, but I can, I can list that Northwest, um, Region Three. Communication, um, specifically in the resource manual as well, yes.
Okay, my turn, okay, um, a couple of things that I'd kinda like to see added, just a couple of sentences mainly, it's. In section number seven, operations policy, in event of a major disaster, the chair of the board. Can, may declare an emergency. If you look at the statutes, number twelve, I think I got it, at twelve twenty-nine subdivision one. Is that that emergency declared by the chair has to be, uh, ratified by the board within three days.
Okay.
So that, I think that needs to be in there, so.
Include the ratification in three days.
Within three days, and, uh, one other maybe sentence to follow that, uh, since, uh, all the. Issues I think we had with, uh, COVID emergency, I know we did have a locally, um, declared emergency. Um, which we, uh, canceled, but that, I think. Um. Uh, even though it's COVID would be state level, but we did have a local one declared, we should probably also say that, uh, the board. Majority voter of, of the board can cancel, uh, an emergency.
Okay.
That's a good point, Tom, I remember when you were talking about COVID because we were intentional, I think you led the way on that actually.
Yeah, the way it was set up was that, uh, the board was gonna be replaced by the chair, the sheriff and the coordinator. I said, whoa, we got a fully functional board here, we don't need to do that, so that's why I led the way on, we need to.
What section was that in again?
Uh, section seven, number A.
What page, it's easier for me, I put it in pages, so that made it. Before you ended up having to bounce around in all these.
Might be twenty-one.
Page twenty-one?
Yeah.
Page forty-one of two hundred and ten.
It's twenty-one maybe on my, twenty-one out of two-ten on my, uh.
Okay, so it's gonna be up, yeah, twenty-one is way up, it's probably in the basic plan or the first part.
Oh, there, whatever, I, yeah, even on your play, page numbers, it's.
There's thirty-two.
Twenty-one.
Yep.
So he goes down a little more.
Little more.
Twenty-one.
Going up.
That's page.
Yeah, you're going the wrong direction, the other direction.
And that bold's on the bottom.
Yeah, them pages that are in there, I'll get rid of them, I see that's confusing, I've never seen that. Operations and policies, okay, yep, all right.
For, whatever, if the, if the chair were to declare, uh, an emergency, within three days, it has to be ratified by the full board. And in another sentence that says is that the declaration itself can be canceled by the majority voter board.
Okay, yep, I'll get that, language change in it.
Yeah, I know you know this, but when you have all the changes made, you wanna make sure we get the final copy.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. So the final copy will come to you, I mean, I can send it, um, and this doesn't have to happen, I mean, I can make the changes and come back in two weeks too. Um, it's fine, so eventually if you, the way Jeff is scrolling back up, um. The first probably seven pages, there's a two-page document with signatures, if you all seen that, um. And then there's actually a page before that where the chair would sign, um, so that's, that's where you'll need to sign, it's just. For the whole commissioners, it'll be on the, the first page of that two-page document and then the chair will s- will sign. Um, eventually, however you wanna do this, I can come back in two weeks with the changes and you can read through it if you want. Um, but I will send this, um, to you, it's just a lot easier if you've seen this. Um. Via email, uh, from DocuSign, um. And just let, um, Jeff know if you prefer, so you, it can be sent to your phones as well. If you prefer signing on, on your small phones, if you have smartphones, you can do that as well. Obviously, reading through that whole document on your phone would be a little cumbersome, um, but if you want that, just let. Jeff know and I can include your phone numbers on it as well, um, but you, if you would prefer, I can come back in two weeks with those changes.
Chair, I don't, I don't know if that's necessary, if we, can we just approve with the recommended changes and, and they can be sent out for signature? And I'd be comfortable with that.
Yeah, I think that's consensus, yes.
Okay.
Take that motion then.
Okay, right, Dave moves, is there a second?
With the recommended changes?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, I'll, I'll second.
So, I, I just have a question then, so, and you want us just to sign with DocuSign?
Yeah, you can DocuSign.
Yeah, okay.
DocuSign is just so much easier, actually, when I started doing this, initially I was. Sending out PDFs, you know, and the signatures, um, and it was a nightmare, uh, building the PDF. To get more than one signature, I was like. Um, it was, uh.
Stack of paper.
Oh, it was, yeah, and it was, it was rough, um, so then I went to DocuSign, which totally alleviated that, it makes it super simple. To get a lot of signatures, um, I wanna give you a heads up too, obviously I ended up updating this, this E O P. Um, extensively, um. We're on a four-year cycle with HSEM, you know, a review cycle, one of those four years is board approval, that. That is not this year, I think it is next year, so I will be back next year, um, to get board approval. Once again, there obviously is probably not gonna be very many changes to our E O P, um, a year from now. And that'll just be at one added form, so the HSEM has a form, um, that I fill out. And along with this, um, you won't even need to sign this anymore, it'll just be that one-page document, the HSEM that. And once again, it's just the board chair, so just giving you a heads up, I'll be back.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, right, motion carried.
Thanks again for the work on this.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I'd put a ton in, yeah.
And, and we now see why this position went from part-time to.
Yeah, yeah, I think, you know, when you have it part-time, I think, you know, you, you get, the EM would. Look at the undertaking, what this is and say, well, I got two days and two days from now I'm a deputy sheriff again. I'll put it off till next week, next week, it just, it's just too much, you, you just can't commit, you know, he's, he's committed to. Full, you know, weeks of, of this, you know, he would come up from his office in the basement, just. Shaking, you know, trying to shake his arms loose and stuff, so.
Is that where your office is?
In the basement, yes, it's fine.
Man, you don't even have a, you don't have a window.
No, no windows, no, no, that's fine, no.
But during, but during the construction, he's lucky, he doesn't get displaced at all, he's, he's good.
Yeah.
Yep, so.
So Troy, going back to, if I've got residents that reach out, or I'm actually gonna have to call a couple of them here this afternoon. Um, as we already discussed with Andrew, we're not picking up debris, but if they need help, basically they could reach out to the Red Cross. Or the United Way.
With, for, for everything excluding debris removal, um, I have talked to some residents, um. There is no assistance out there for debris removal, none, um, sadly. And they're hearing it a little bit on the radio that there is debris assessment, assistance through the Community Resource Connection Center. Though, in Bemidji, that is only for the city of Bemidji residents, that's it. Um. There is no way around it, so what happened is the United Way, uh, spearheaded this, um, and the community, community resource. Uh, connections and. They just decided that it was too hard to track and they didn't wanna send all these volunteers. You know, out all over, um, within Beltrami County and Hubbard County to assist. Um, citizens, so there is no help and, well, I've had a few people that are really frustrated, um. A couple that are frustrated with the county because the county's not helping them, um, with this too, so. Um. Being as compassionate as I can, you know, when I talk to them, but there, there's one elderly woman up. In your neck of the woods that's pretty upset, so.
Yep, yep, and then, uh, yeah, and I actually, um, reached out to a gentleman yesterday. Cause I had found out about the community connections and he said, uh, I don't need help, I just want help. He wants to be able to put the debris on the curb and have somebody take it away, and I told him that we're not, we're not doing that.
Yep.
But he felt that he could do everything else.
Yeah, that's, there's some that are upset with that too, because, like I said, the city of Bemidji is doing it along with those two townships, but. Nobody else is, but they don't wanna hear that anyway either, so they really believe, you know, that the county needs to step up, but.
And, and do you know which two townships for sure, I'm assuming?
It's Northern Township and whatever one is right next to Northern.
Oh, okay, so that's in Beltrami.
Beltrami County, yep, yep, it's not, not our townships, no, if you do get questions too, we did post it out there yesterday. Um, and sent out a media release as well, that the transfer station, um, up on Cabaco in a corner did expand its hours. Um, they normally weren't, were not open on Tuesdays and Wednesdays and now they are through the seventeenth, so the first three weeks of July. They are open on, uh, Tuesdays and Wednesdays, normal business hours, which for them is, uh, eight to five, or seven to five. Um, I probably have to go and look, um. Specifically on the two days, Tuesday and Wednesday, they do only want to take, um, debris removal, they don't want people bringing garbage. I mean, that was part of the post, but, so, but if you have citizens that do ask, through that seventeenth, the week of, of the seventeenth, they will be open. And they'll re- reevaluate at that point.
Sounds good, thank you.
Hmm.
And I'd like to thank the county administrator and you individual board members for the support and the patience on this emergency operations plan. Um, allowing us to get it done right, so. Yeah, appreciate it, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Okay, administrator.
Very briefly, um, Hubbard County Township Association meeting is Monday the twenty-first. At Henrietta Town Hall at seven o'clock, um. I just talked with Theora yesterday, so I'll be talking a little bit about that issue that we talked about, about. Tax-exempt parcels and their impact to taxpayers. Um, we are also working with, uh, Tyler. To evaluate their system for online payments, so that people will be able to more easily pay their, um, taxes online if they want to. Um, and it will also, if we do it, switch over our credit card processing pretty much across the county. Uh, and coordinate it through the, through the website, they also have a cashiering, um, feature in Tyler. That I think we're gonna go with, but there's a cashiering feature in I F S two and we have to figure out the interface between the two of those, so Murray and I will be. Bringing a recommendation either in two weeks or the first week in August, um, which way to proceed with that. Um, there is no personnel meeting today because, um, Tessa's not available to join us, so we'll. Put that off until, we may even reschedule a special one if we can, if we can get something scheduled for that, but. She's unable, unable to join us, so we, we won't have that meeting, we are having, um, coffee and donuts down on the second floor. So you guys can all see where we're at, I was really hoping we're gonna have staff there today, but as we discussed, they'll be, they'll be moving in tomorrow. Um, but you'll be able to see, uh, what the new furniture looks like, they are supposed to be finishing that up today. And, uh, you'll be able to see what the new space looks like, so we invite you down there and I've already invited all the staff in the building to join us too, so.
Will we be having a public safety and transportation meeting this week, it's on Friday, which is the fourth.
I will have, no, we're not having it Friday, we're not having it this week, so I will check with, I will check with the department managers and see. Uh, and I am out on the eleventh, so that's, we're not gonna just push it back a week, so I will have to let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, committee reports, who would like to start?
I could start, cause I, I did not make heritage, so I've got just a little bit on HLDC. Uh, Heartland Heights is moving along, um, and a good part is the, the city just has to produce a letter. That they expect no archaeological findings out there because it's been farmed, pretty much. The historical record shows it's been farmed, so we can avoid the dig. That part of it, so we should be moving on that pretty quick. You'll have to do heritage, Charlie.
Okay, yep, I can go next, so heritage. Quite a bit of stuff here, I'm gonna just find my, so at Heritage Living Center, um, we are at forty-three. Residents, discussion took place, um, we have fifty-six, we have a capacity of sixty-four beds. We've laid away some and now it, so we, we could move up to fifty-six. However, the state now has taken away the credit for laying away beds. And I accidentally left my paper at home, Jeff, do you remember how much we pay per bed that isn't filled? And I accidentally left my paper at home. Jeff, do you remember how much we pay per bed that isn't filled? It's like fifteen hundred dollars, I think, wasn't it?
I think so.
So we're actually paying fifty, we, starting next year, we'll have to pay fifteen hundred dollars for every bed that is not used. So, um, Steph.
What's the rationale, anything like that?
The state wants money. So Stephanie said that, that she's, she's looking at, she, at what would be a good, a good portion of beds that we would have open. And so she's, she thought she would bring that down from fifty-six. I'm not gonna quote her on what she thought 'cause she hasn't worked all the way through that, but, so that was part of the discussion. Um, we also approved a quote for a flat portion of the roof, um, that's actually leaking, and we had discussion. Um, it seems like we've had a lot of maintenance issues, but the maintenance issues stem from, we had no money during COVID. We just put off whatever we could, and so they're correcting, um, stuff for that. Um, talked about, I had a discussion about the new, um, minimum wage that will be required for different positions, um, that we won't have a choice on, and, um, Stephanie's gonna be working with somebody to see then how that affects, um, the positions that aren't mandated. And then what the total cost of that's gonna be. Once again, that is not gonna be reimbursed from the state. And let me get, uh, the financials up here. So the financials are looking much better, um, but part of the reason is because we had over two hundred thousand in, um, interest payments. So for that.
Which was from the ERC money.
Right. I'm trying to get the overall one. Oh, it is up here, okay. So just in a nutshell, we show, um, from, from May, that we had an income, an net income of two hundred forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three for the entire campus, but two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars of that is the interest payment. So the good news is, we're kinda holding our own and still a little bit above zero. That's progress. And we did have discussion too about there's gonna be several nursing homes that will be closing because of what the state's doing. No projected numbers on that right now, but, um, they're just gonna keep running as best they can and making adjustments to make sure it all works out.
It's interesting, I read in the paper, and when I would just keep rolling along.
I know.
Yeah, they're talking about expanding.
An expansion, yeah.
Yeah.
Of an assisted living, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, then the other thi, the other meeting I had was Mahabi. It was a really interesting meeting. We had, um, our, our program manager report by Alice Meyer, and so I just wanna reiterate what a fantastic job Mahabi's doing to try raise people out of poverty. And we had a discussion because Mahabi is, you know, being used nationwide, and there's so many. I, we, we had discussion about this, and I, I actually asked Liz, how come people aren't being propelled forward in other agencies? And she said, a lot of times the agency can't see beyond, um, what they're offering to either have the resources or the time or the staff to propel people forward. So I just wanna reiterate again, the whole family approach, which is, um, they take people from crisis, which is homelessness due to loss of jobs, mental health, illness, whatever. That's step one. Step two is they make sure that the people are receiving the benefits that they need. First of all, they find a place to stay. Secondly, they get the benefits that they're qualified for. Number three is they do a relationship coaching with the family that includes helping them find a job. Number four is asset building, so they help with budgeting. And number five is, um, for the people to give back somehow. A lot of people are at like, um, um, three, they have, um, what they call CLIME, and that's for people, families that are enrolled in Head Starts, and then the, the family itself can take, or the adults can take training for jobs. And so right now, um, the hot jobs for training are welding, nursing, or CNA. They currently have seventeen enrolled and five have, uh, gotten jobs and retained. And then they have a program called Youth at Work, ages fourteen to twenty-four, and that's really focused on helping youth get their GED. There's a cost to GED, plus just the discipline of doing that. And so, um, that's a twenty-week course. And that's specifically geared for youth at risk with trouble with English, substance abuse, um, it's, and, um, foster children. They're, they're focusing on helping those. And so, um, it was just really encouraging to hear that people are actually being propelled out of poverty, and they're learning, they're holding down jobs, and they're getting ahead. And a lot, several of the people that have been helped have now come back and are working in, somehow in a position in Mahabi or in, in, um, jobs around towns, which would be Park Rapids, which would be Park Rapids. So it was very encouraging. The other thing I have is, um, so I'm on the executive committee for Prime West, and we had a meeting last week, and the job is now posted for the executive director, and we're gonna, um, be doing interviews in August.
Okay, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. Well, I had a wedding, so I don't have anything. I was pretty busy, so, um, Tom?
Uh, while I had Parks Board, um, we got the Deep Lake update. Maybe I can add one other one, the, uh, um, Fish and Pure, they've got that already over at the, uh, Public Works Office, and then once the demo is completed, they'll get it moved over there. Um, Garfield Beach, that concrete has been poured and fences installed. Uh, they're, they're gonna be painting all those posts at Hartman Park, uh, very soon. Not already, but it should be soon. Um, let's see, basketball nets at Lake George, uh, Park, that needs, they're gonna be replaced. Uh. I had a lot of discussion on the pickleball courts again. Um, the, the club, they're, um, we had, uh, they presented the possibility for four locations and, you know, right immediately adjacent to the existing six. So that's a possibility, or still the idea of, uh, that TFL property by, um, Depot Park. And there, they think they can get at least ten courts in, with a lot of parking available too. So, kinda sounds like they're leaning towards that, which that would be a good location for it. Um, I had SWCD meeting, but I really was looking for anything new to put, to say about it, um, but I don't have anything, so.
Okay.
That's it.
Alright. And I had, excuse me, I had a last meeting. I just talked briefly about Foston, and since I have my paperwork now, uh, mixed solid waste to the incinerator, Hubbard County, we're six point three percent down from the totals of last year at, uh, two thousand one hundred eighty-four tons. Um, the recyclables are pretty much holding steady, uh, at, at a, I guess, if you wanna call it a fair price. Um, we're not at historic highs and not at historical lows like we have over the last few years. Um, let's see, and, and if you look, they got, you know, different charts and all that stuff. Uh, you look at from year to year, we're, we're right in the ballpark, you know, um. Here, recyclable delivered, uh, twenty-twenty-four, we had eight hundred and twenty-one tons. This year, we have eight hundred and twenty. You know, so it's numbers like that. So basically, there's, uh, a lot of things are the same. I think I'd mentioned about how we didn't get any funding from the state for the nine counties, uh, hub and spoke type of stuff. Um, so that's that. And let's see, HRDC. Excuse me. HRDC. I've talked about housing, that basically the conifers, uh, that are there in Bemidji, uh, they're looking at enlarging it, uh, but they have to create a new road to go through there, so that was discussed. Um, we talked about the building that we are using, um, they needed the roof replaced, and we got, uh, a company that was working in the area on the Beltrami County solid, our transfer station down there, uh, gave us a heck of a bid compared to all the other ones. Uh, the materials were there. The materials were dropped off the week before the storm.
Oh.
And, but nothing was, they're all in bundles and stuff, you know, so with the weight and that, I, I was concerned about that. Uh, 'cause when I drove by one day to go to work, I happened to look and you could see a piece of sheet metal, you know, roofing up against some trees, and I was told that was from some, who knows what building that was from, but it wasn't from ours, so it was good. Um, they talked about a housing development that they're doing over, uh, by the, the high school in Bemidji. Um, and they're working with the, uh, the Bemidji schools on building a couple of homes this year. Uh, we went over the budget and approved that, and, uh, let's see. Tammy Hagan, I've received an award for excellence for regional transportation by NATO, and, uh, and let's see, they're, we're in the process, it seems like we're always in the process of doing audits. And then, of course, there was some discussion on the annual meeting, which will be this month, and in Clearwater County, so it'll be in the city of Bagley, we'll be doing that. Uh, I had Northwest Minnesota Juvenile Center meeting also, where we talked about, uh, the per diems. Well, talked about the budget, and, uh, many know that we had to have a big jump, uh, last year, the year before, to kinda keep employees, instead of losing them. Uh, we're looking at, uh, per diem rates increasing three percent for member counties, which will work out to an average of ten dollars and fifty cents a day, and a seven and a half percent increase for non-member counties, which would be thirty-two dollars and twenty-five cents a day. There again, went over the budget, capital improvement plans, um, some things we delayed, and now with the storm, um, that's all up in the air. It's, I don't know if any of you have been to the Northwestern Minnesota Juvenile Center. It's a two-lane road in there, uh, probably, I'd say at least a city block, if not two city blocks, winding back there to the actual buildings. Um, we, it sounds like, uh, the city of Bemidji, you know, with, with, uh, they're gonna be, we, we're cleaning it up, but they're gonna, you know, pick up the debris along the side of the road and everything like that. And I think I mentioned last time, all the destruction, and yet the, the greenhouse, one of the flimsiest buildings out there is no damage to it, it's just.
Did they have damage to their main building?
Yes, not, not extensive, but it's, it's a block build, or con, or brick building, you know, so it's, it's good. The roof did not leak at all. We had issues with that a couple of years ago and had the roof redone. Then we had a little, a few leaks, issues, those all got solved, and then with the, the storm and all that, no leaks in that, uh, so that was good to hear. Um, let's see. And like I say, it was an executive board meeting, so we didn't go over a lot, like I said, basically budget and, and the capital improvement plan, and stuff like that, per diems increasing. And let's see. I guess, uh, we were all at the County Board of Adjustment and Equalization meeting, so I don't need to discuss that. And I think that'll do it for me. Thank you.
Yeah, just one thing I wanted to mention, um, uh, Josh from Solid Waste gave us an update. The, the horizontal grinders in Beltrami County are being utilized for storm debris, uh, removal and cleanup, so. That, that's a good thing. I mean, it's, I hate to say it's opportunistic that we had it, but, um, but it works out for the best, yeah. We, we weren't looking for this kinda use for it at all, but it is up there and is being utilized, and they're training an individual there, um, at Beltrami, so that he can, he can operate it. We don't have to have an operator there, hopefully, um, so.
I have one thing to add from Mahabi too. Um, we closed on the, um, furniture building that's across the street on June second.
Oh, oh, okay.
Oh, got that too now. What, what are they gonna do with, use that for?
Um, they're, well, part of it they need for office, but they're exploring. There's been a lot of people from the community that want an indoor place.
Oh, sure.
And, and so don't quote me on this, 'cause it's not, it's not a done deal, but that, they're exploring that option.
I know when I was with Hubbard, Healthy Hubbard County, um, it seems like every time they had a survey, uh, indoor facility for, for activities, and that was always on the top of the list, or towards the top.
The gymnast had, had explored it, but the ceiling isn't high enough for their use.
Oh, okay, yeah, that makes sense. Um, and then meetings to note, um, the ones on the agenda, and then is, I have unmined calendar, MRC possibly on July seventh.
I do too, but, uh, you know, yesterday we got an email.
Yeah, and it just says.
Yeah, so I, I don't think this.
September, October, December, so.
And I did sign up for the AMC virtual launch for next, uh, Wednesday.
Wednesday?
Yeah.
Alright, is there anything else? Alright, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Ted moves. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Tom seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.